Thank you and a happy Thursday afternoon and welcome to our campus chancellor town hall. I'm very thrilled to see such a good crowd here right at the end of the quarter. But what I'd like to do today, other than wish you all happy holidays and a good break, is to catch you up before the end of the year on some of the things that have been happening around UW Tacoma. In my office, I know a lot of things have been happening around UW Tacoma that I don't even know about that you've been responsible for. And I'd love to chat with you at some of the social events we have over the next weeks about the things that you're doing. But I've committed to you to keep you informed of the major initiatives and not-so-major initiatives that we're doing in the chancellor's office, so I'd like to do that again today. Some of these may be a little bit of a review from the last town hall, a little over six weeks or so ago, but I just want to update you on some subtle things that have changed in these initiatives. So that's kind of the hope for today. The outline, and I have to make an apology before I start, I made all my slides today and I brought them over and loaded them on and some of the fonts weren't in here. So that's never happened to me before. So it looks kind of funny, some of these slides. Yeah, and I think it's your fault, John, I'm sure.
Brian's not here.
Yeah, I've been, yeah, yeah, since Brian's not here, yeah. And actually, I think that's where it stems from because my friends in advancement have been very good to make me a couple slides recently for some presentations I've been doing. I brought those back to my office, probably brought some fonts with them back to my office that aren't supported here. So I apologize if we see something funny along the way, I'll try to correct it on the fly, alright? So, we're going to talk about searches, we're going to talk about leadership development, a big initiative which I've really never talked about yet is the UW Tacoma Law School. Talk about how the budget is coming together for next year, some enrollment plans for next year, the first two-year task force is getting ready to kick off. I'll bring you up to speed on a lot of exciting developments in the strategic plan and then at the end, I'm sure we'll have time for questions and discussion. So let's talk about searches and leadership development. First of all, as you all know, you would have to be in an alley somewhere to not know that we have a new executive vice chancellor for academic affairs, Dr. Melissa Lavitt, coming January 4th. She was here last Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, found a place downtown, close to the school. She's extremely excited about coming here. I'm extremely excited about her coming here. She's actually moving here on December 18th, so just a couple weeks away, we'll have our permanent vice chancellor for academic affairs. We're excited about that. We have most of our searches kicked off and underway now. IAS started out first, but I think they're now about a week behind the Milgard, but we have the same consultant who you might remember, Alberto Pimentel is the consultant. He works for Storeback Pimentel. It's a very prestigious consulting firm and they're doing both of these searches, the IAS, that's chaired by Ali and co-chaired by Jenny Quinn, and the Milgard chaired by Cheryl and co-chaired by Issan Faraz. Both of those are advertised and I believe early in the year, probably the end of January, beginning of February, we'll start kind of dragging through there for some finalists to come to campus, our first airport interviews and then campus interviews. Education has made a lot of progress since we last talked. Their ad will probably go out tomorrow. I believe Bill and myself and now Elizabeth as well, all reviewed it yesterday and today and that should be going out and being advertised very soon. So it will almost catch up with the other two searches. It depends on how long they want to leave that over the winter. So those are all moving forward. The Institute, we haven't started that search yet. We're still debating on whether or not we're going to move forward, if we'll wait till we answer the question about schools or programs, which I'll talk about in a few minutes. So that is not as far as long as the other three. And we have an interim there right now. We do have a last executive search, the associate vice chancellor for educational outreach, that's being chaired by Lisa Hoffman. The committee is assembled, the committee I believe has had their first meeting and I think that may be advertised now or soon.
Next day.
Next day or two. So it's right alongside the education search. So I'm feeling really good about all these searches. The bad news is about the same time next spring, all of us are going to be interviewing lots of people. So that's okay. At least we spread them out over a couple week period. Okay, if you recall, we had resignation, one of our people in international studies left campus over the summer. So I had been wondering about how we arrange international studies on this campus, so I used that opportunity to pause. We have Professor Coffey, who's graciously agreed to step in and work part-time to keep us moving, at least in the international studies part, the part with study abroad and all those. He's working on that. And in the meantime, we brought in two consultants, two what I'll call kind of experts, longtime leaders in higher education in international affairs, both from institutions similar to ours. IUPY, I don't know if you think that's similar, it is an urban serving but it's much larger. It's 30,000, it's a downtown campus though, it's a research-based campus. That is where the one consultant, Gil, is from. Monica is from a campus a little more our size, University of Michigan Dearborn. So it's a regional campus of a flagship university. Anyway, they were here for about two and a half days. They met with some 40 to 50 people. And originally, I had asked for a report within approximately three weeks after they did their visit. It's been a little over three weeks and that's because they had one interview that they wanted to do, but the person was in China, so they waited until he got back. That's the leader of international or global affairs, the vice provost for global affairs on the Seattle campus, because I wanted them to interview that person as well. So that took place last week, so Gil and Monica promised me the report by the end of this week. So I was hoping to have it today so I could tell you I had it, but I don't have it today. But I expect it the next day or two. So we're excited about hearing about from them. And then, I also wanted to tell you a little bit more about what's going on with our race and equity initiative on campus. Many of you may have seen the letter I sent out to the campus about two weeks ago and I felt compelled to send out that letter because a lot of people were asking, because a lot of things have been happening around the country. You know, unless, again, like you're in the alley or under a box, a lot of things have happened and I wanted to let you all know that we were thinking about that, we are doing things on this campus, we're not standing idly by. So at a cabinet meeting, we discussed this and all the representatives on campus agreed that we should at least talk to our campus and tell them we're united on standing firm that we do believe in equity and inclusion on our campus and that we are working together. So some of the things that are going on that I know about is the faculty just voted last Thursday or Friday, they adopted a new resolution and you can read that if you're interested, it got circulated all across campus. Our students are planning a Day of Hope. I don't know the details of this, it's still under the planning phase, but they're going to host a Day of Hope on our campus right after the new quarter starts. Our staff are starting a reading club and you've probably seen a lot of communication about that, trying to select the books. They're also organizing training. We have the committee being chaired by Ricardo Ortega. That committee has been meeting and they are putting together a plan for us to look at for the coming year. It involves additional training, it involves events, celebrations on our campus. So we're not standing by idly. I did want to tell you though, because I did have people question the letter, that we do not believe that we are 100% done on this campus. We have a lot of issues going on that we're working really hard to solve and to get over some of the past belief systems. So we didn't try to say that we don't have issues at UW Tacoma. As you all know, our faculty diversity doesn't come close yet to matching the diversity of our student body. And as I talk about enrollment and retention and things like that, you're going to see our student body is getting more diverse as we speak. So we have lots of issues to work on, but at least we're standing together and agreeing to work on those. Programs to schools. I kind of dropped this on you at the last meeting because really, all that was happening before I got here is education was putting a plan forward to become a school. What had happened is over the summer, the Seattle campus asked us, in order to better evaluate the merits of the education proposal, what are we doing with respect to the other programs on our campus? And they ask us for a more comprehensive plan of what we are going to do over time before they can adequately evaluate the education proposal. So I've talked to Bill and he has worked with the deans and directors and as far as I know right now, this is kind of our plan. Education has revised its proposal because it's three or four, five months old now, have kind of updated, revised it. The Institute, using the education proposal as a template, is working on a proposal that I don't know exactly how far along they are, but they're making good progress and we're determining right now if we're going to wait on them and send something forward so we can send both of those at the same time with an overall plan that includes a discussion of the following. Urban Studies is beginning discussions, nursing and healthcare leadership and social work are also, they've been in discussions, but both of these programs have connections to their counterparts in Seattle, which make it a little more complicated. And I hear that in the past, we've also had discussions on this campus about collaborations between possibly social work, urban studies, or some other departments. So what we're trying to do is move forward, tell Seattle that we do have a plan similar to what I've outlined here and then have attached to that plan, a firm proposal for education and I'm pretty sure we'll have a firm proposal for the Institute. So that's kind of where we are on that and that's something that Melissa will pick up as soon as she gets here and move it forward. Okay, I showed you this graph before, but it's getting ready to start, so I thought I would show it to you one more time and tell you that we have further developed our efforts to put in a shared governance type of steering committee for the budget process at UW Tacoma. We have a committee of almost 30 people made up of the deans, the directors, student representatives, faculty representatives, staff representatives, and that committee, we're calling the CBC, Campus Budget Committee. And that committee, their job is to understand our strategic plan, which is under development, to understand the inputs from the state, the legislative session, to understand the inputs from UW Seattle, we work with them on our budget, to understand the stakeholders and then give recommendations to this executive budget committee through a looped process with the academic schools, the administrative units, all the units we have on this campus need to be involved with their representative on the university budget, not the university, campus budget committee to give recommendations to the executive budget committee. And then the executive budget committee, I'm a member of that and then I'll have to make the decisions based on that. I made it go back around to ensure you that based on the recommendations we receive, I will come back to these constituents and talk to you about the final budget decisions we had to make. Because if I do something that's against an overwhelming recommendation of the campus, I better have a really good reason to do so. So I will commit to come back to you. And this is actually an ongoing process. It's not like tomorrow, we have to, well, actually sooner or later, we do have to have the budget done on a particular day. But the process is just kicking off. I showed you the committee before. We are in the final stages of putting one more person on that and that's our graduate student and I have at least three nominations now, which last time I talked to you, I had zero, so I have three nominations. So we're going to solidify that and the first meeting is next week, December 18th. I bet you hate, you can't go to that, don't you? Okay, what's going on with the law school? Well, as I was interviewing and came to campus, it was referred to as UW Law because the discussion was the University of Washington taking its prestigious law school and in some form or fashion, making a law program available to students in the South Sound on our campus. Now, the ABA, the accreditation body for law, does require that a significant proportion of a program like that be on the Seattle campus, but we were okay with that, we were talking through all that. And along the way, it became evident that that wasn't fully supported by University of Washington, by the law faculty, and also there are several external factors going on in the world of law schools that made that more difficult than it was when it was previously or beginning initially envisioned, okay? So the environment had changed. So it didn't become as good an idea as it had previously. So about a week or so ago, it was decided that we should look at doing that on our own. So there are many advantages to doing that and there are also disadvantages to doing that. So what we've done, actually since Monday, have tried to qualify exactly the conditions of which we think we could successfully do something like that on this campus. And we're in the process of communicating that to our legislators, to the law community who wants to see this happen, to our colleagues at Seattle, and they are numerous. First of all, we have to get a consultant that will help us do what's called a self-study. A self-study is done actually in conjunction with the ABA. A team will come to campus, they'll look at all kinds of things, interview, dig into the other law programs at the state and do a very comprehensive study. So therefore, there would have to be a positive outcome of that study. We would have to be able to do this in conjunction with the things that we decide are our priority based on the strategic plan that's already started. We would have to have the support of our colleagues in Seattle, we would have to have financial commitments from the private community and the legislature for us to do this because it would be a heavy, heavy lift for us to do it on our own. This is a complete different deal than UW bringing a law school here. So I wanted to tell you that since Monday, we've actually been charged with doing this and are taking our first step forward. I've put a blue ribbon committee together, led by Bill, Bill Koontz, our interim vice chancellor for academic affairs, has agreed to lead this committee. We have several faculty members on it, several vice chancellors, and a representative from Seattle. So that's what's going on with the law school. Too far? There we go. Now let's talk a little bit about the budget. Okay, as I told you, the process is going to kick off next, what is the 18th, Friday? Thursday? Next Friday. It's going to kick off next Friday with a budget 101. And that is an overview that Jan has prepared for this group, explaining to us how the budget is built or how it comes out of the legislature, how it is built at Seattle, what milestones we have, what the timeline is, how it's set up, how much depends on tuition, how much depends on allocation, all those kinds of things. So the people giving advice to the executive budget committee and ultimately to me, have a good understanding of how the budget works. So that's step one. And then those people on the committee have agreed that in the spring, they'll have to meet a little more often. They'll meet probably three or four times in the spring as we learn these various things along the milestone, how much flexibility we'll have, and they'll make recommendations to us. It assumes a 10% budget, not budget, 10% tuition reduction, which is a little dicey for us right now and you'll see that we are asking as our top request for the legislature to make that whole and they've indicated to us that they would, but until they do, you don't have a guarantee. So it assumes that they're going to do that. And before, I told you that in Seattle, as I work with the board of deans and chancellors, that we were working towards a 4%, well now, they've stepped back a little bit and said for sure a 3% and hopefully a 4% compensation raise next year. I've already talked about that. And as a minimum, we want the resources we have to be the same as now. So that has implications for our enrollment, because we don't want to lose people that we have now. So what we're doing right now is looking very closely at the faculty searches, we're comparing those with predictions of enrollment trends, and I'm going to show you that in a minute, and trying to get a better match between our faculty capacity, the demand out in our community for our programs, and the people we have here to serve the students. So I think it's very important for us to make that match as we go forward. Not that we didn't in the past, but you know, you all were here when I first started getting here, people were concerned about workload, not matching where the resources were. And that's why we're doing the strategic planning process, so we can match the resources to our priorities and to the places where we have students that need to be served. Now this is what I'm talking about with respect to workload. If you look at the student credit hours being served by our faculty, no wonder people were feeling a little pressured. As we were growing every year, in 2010, 2011, and going on into 2011, 2012, the student credit hours were approaching 800 per faculty FTE, which is significant. It's a good, solid number for an institution like ours, maybe on the high side a little bit. But I believe my predecessors responded, authorized searches. We have a lot of new faculty that came two years ago, then additional new faculty that came last year, and we've authorized several new searches for this year. And what that has been able to do is help our trend go down more reasonably. But my concern now is we've crossed that 700 and continue to go down, we need to be careful and not go too far down, we need to keep that strong and we have to do that by paying more attention. We can't teach classes with three students or five students, we need to have a solid group of students in each class. So we're looking at all those things now as we move forward. Alright, so that influences our enrollment development quite a bit. So I really like this template that Carl sent us as a campus about two weeks ago and I've been looking at this quite a bit and it tells us a whole lot of things. And I want to look at that for a minute and bring a few things to your attention. First of all, this first corner is the first time in college students and transfer students, how many applied? 32, 88 applied. How many we admitted out of that group? We admitted 83% of the first time and 75% of the transfers. And then, how many actually enrolled? Starts painting a very good picture. What's interesting though is if you look at the last couple years, in 2012, 13, 14, and then 15, look what's happened. We've admitted less of a percent of those who have applied. And that could mean several things. That could mean we were feeling, you know, too constrained, so we weren't letting as many students in. It could mean that we were really being, you know, deliberate about increasing the quality of our entering class. It could mean many things, but what it actually means is the number or the percent that we admitted is less. The percent that accepted our admission and actually got enrolled is less too, or also. See, it's gone from 53, 52, 52, 50. So those two things compound each other. We admitted less and less of the ones we admitted accepted our admission. So that's just a trend that we have to start thinking about. So I believe that tells us we need to be a little more purposeful and aggressive maybe in our marketing and our recruiting of those students. You can see the good things though, we have really wonderful characteristics of our incoming class. This class here would be our, is this our newly admitted class or is this both? I think this must be both together. Yeah, this is both together. This is the distribution of those students. So of those 1293 that ended up accepting our application, this is where they went in our institution. So this is very helpful for us in making our plans to pay attention to these kind of things. Another thing that I noticed that's very interesting is if you look at our first time in college demographics and look at the percentages as with respect to diversity and race, we have a higher percentage of African-American, a higher percentage of Hispanic than we have in the institution as a whole right now. So as we continue to increase in first time admits at our college instead of transfers, it's diversifying our student population as well. And that's really kind of cool. It not only is diversifying, but I just showed you that the characteristics are creeping up also, the quality, that's a bad word, but you know, the academic credentials of those students that are from high school, their ACTs and those kinds of things are also creeping up as well. So this is really good news, but we have to be purposeful and we have to be deliberate in thinking about how many students we're going to serve and how we're going to serve them and those things. So another thing I wanted you to look at, this is the transfer and you can see if you go back, for instance, African-American, brand-new students, it's 14. Transfer, whoops, transfer, it's 10. All of those, I believe, are lower in the transfer student population, all the different diverse elements that we have. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention. Up here, you can see also in the transfer admissions, the number admitted has also gone down from 82, it's tapered over to 75. And I'm not sure exactly what that means, if they're not quite prepared when they apply here, but it's real, the percent that are being transferred has decreased over the past several years. So we need to watch that. Okay, so based on this, based on the budget slides I showed you before and based on analysis that Chancellor Koontz, or Vice Chancellor Koontz, has been doing with the deans and directors, we feel that we need to be prepared for about 200 new students and that's not arbitrary, that's matching where we think there is demand and we have capacity or capacity coming, because we have some searches going on right now, with what we actually can serve here. So we've worked on matching all those together and when you do that, it's not exact science. I mean, Carl and Bill and Cedric, they try to be as exact as possible, but roughly 200 to 250 students, which would be somewhere between 4% and 5%. So that's what we're looking at for next fall, so you can do the math, we had exactly 4,600, that would put us at 48. So we're approaching that 5,000 very soon, maybe by 17, if we have a similar growth next year. Okay, first two-year task force. I think they have their first meeting tomorrow. I recruited Lisa Hoffman, Deidre Murner, and Bonnie Becker to lead in this development. I don't know if it's going to be one task force or several task force, but we have good leadership there. We sent out a call for participation. We were thrilled, we got 36 volunteers, well-qualified volunteers, so if you add those to our three leaders, we have 39 people willing to get involved in helping us decide what's next for the two-year experience at UW Tacoma. So I think their plan is, they're going to meet tomorrow, you met as a leadership today, is that correct? Yesterday, yesterday. I had made a plan for tomorrow. They're going to talk about the scope of what it is they need to do and then kind of deploy their resources and subcommittees or whatever, so I don't know a whole lot until after they meet tomorrow, but they have a lot of work on their plate and as late as it is in the autumn, most of that work will happen in the spring and winter quarters. Strategic planning process, progress. Well, I showed you this slide before, just to make sure you understood the things about the strategic plan that I hold dear, it's going to be transparent, collaborative, engaging, inclusive, and I talked a little bit about how it was coming together. Well, we know a lot more now because we're a couple more months into it. And again, it's not this 30-person committee and that's going to be really evident as you kind of see some of the results. I did tell you though, that several campus initiatives have to continue to move forward without waiting on the strategic plan and we talked a little bit about those and I've mentioned a couple of them already. And I told you that the programs to schools needed to move forward regardless of what happens to the strategic plan. We might reconfigure things in the future, but I want to keep the initiative to move us to schools moving forward because I think we're at a disadvantage if we recruit directors rather than deans. Also, the strategic enrollment plan, we talked about that, it's coming together, we're really being strategic about how we look at enrollment and budget. We also talked about that two-year program and we talked about our race and equity initiative on campus. So those are progressing, not waiting on the strategic plan. So what we did is we started deploying the strategic planning committee out to their constituents. How many of you attended one of the constituent groups, either for staff, faculty, and your department? How many in the room attended that? Okay, so I'm talking to people who know about this. They came to you and they probably showed you these slides I'm going to run through. They told you why you were in the room. They showed you a graph, a timeline. Now this timeline is a little different. What we've done is because it was so much fun doing these, we've stretched the big question stakeholder meetings. And actually, a couple of the people couldn't meet with us, the city couldn't meet with us to January 10th or something and a couple other people couldn't meet with us in December. So we're extending the big question stakeholder meetings into the new year a little bit. So therefore, we can't finalize our vision because our vision is based on what we learned from those meetings. from those meetings. But we're going to get to work on it. Next week, on Monday, we have almost an all-day retreat. We're going to work on that vision. We're actually bringing, what do we call that person?
Graphic.
A visual facilitator, which is somebody who's going to come and help us actually visualize, maybe draw what we want UW Tacoma to become in 25 years, based on some of the analysis, the preliminary analysis of this data. Bonnie is a scientist, and she can't stand to let the data sit there without going ahead and trying to analyze it and see what's happening. And trends are starting to, you know, come up in our data already, and it's exciting. So we're working on that. We're going to create the vision. It's going to be draft until we finish all those. Then, based on that vision, we're going to identify the strategic priorities, the wildly important goals, and then we're going to come back and make sure everybody agrees that this is what we should do based on that vision over the next few years. And then we're going to go back, draft some plans, some more details, and then come back to the stakeholders. So it didn't change much, but we had to adjust the timeline a little bit. This was, what we showed you was the outline of the plan or the structure of the plan. That's still roughly the same. And then, this is why we have another meeting after this. As we were going through those stakeholder meetings and talking to you about your aspirations for us as an urban-serving mission, we learned that everybody didn't have the same view of an urban-serving mission, and a lot of people didn't really understand what that was, and some people disagreed with that, which is good. When you have a place full of smart people, inquisitive people, you will run into that. But we didn't want that to be our fault for not talking about what urban serving is. So we've been a little more aggressive. We've organized two open forums, one this afternoon, right after this, at 1:31 tomorrow, open to anybody if you just want to come and talk about that. I'll talk to you what I know about it. This is actually the first urban-serving university I've worked in. In Montana, we were called Montana's only urban university, but we never joined USU. So I'm happy to talk to you about that, and I know a lot of you are going to talk about it in your own departments and things like that. So if you're interested, come at 1:30. So this was the big question we ask everybody, and then we ask everybody to do this survey. And we actually sent this survey also to a lot of our alumni. And so far, we have 216 faculty that participated, 201 staff, 230 students, 92 and 1/2. I assume that somebody said they were alumni and, okay, and a community member. This is fresh off the press. And we have a great outpouring of our alumni that have answered the survey. So if you add those numbers up, it's right at 1,000 people already have been involved in helping us set the vision for UW Tacoma over the next several years. So that's a lot, but that's what we've been up to, so now I'm happy to answer any of your questions. While she's going over there, I got to tell you a joke.
Hurry up again.
I went to, I had the pleasure, I'm sorry, Divya, I'll just, I'll do this really quickly.
I was going to open with a song, but that's okay.
I had the pleasure. Dr. Calce went to China, some of you know, and out of the clear blue sky, she asked myself and Chancellor Wolf if we would host the football game. It was really cool. So we said, of course we would. So we went to host the football game up in the president's suite and wine and dine with all the alumni and things. It was really fun. But before we started, I thought it'd be good to crack a joke about the Utah team that we were playing, because I had heard the president was going to come to the alumni gathering. So he came in with his big contingent, so I was a little nervous, but I went ahead and cracked my Utah joke. And it went over well. He even laughed, and his wife later told me it was, it was okay. But anyway, I was standing by this gentleman who was a guest of Chancellor Ye, and his son was with him, and he tugged on my shirt, and he said, "Did you get your joke off the internet?" And I said, "Well, how did you know?" He said, "Well, I read that same joke on blah, blah, blah." So this little guy was a joke expert. His dad told me that he knows every joke on the internet, and I'm just glad other people in the room didn't, but he knew my joke. I'm sorry, go ahead.
So sorry about that. I feel your pain. A lot of my material comes from the internet as well. Quick question about the UW Tacoma Law School.
Yes.
You spoke in passive voice. It has been decided, and we have been charged. So if you could speak to the decision-making process behind it. It's a great idea. I just want to know how it was decided.
Well, here's the decision-making process. Somewhere back in time, the campus, chancellor, whoever, however you made decisions in the past, decided it was a good idea to investigate a UW Law School on this campus, right? So that had already happened. So that was moving along. I came, learned about that. I knew about it before I applied. I knew about it after I applied, and I knew about it after I got here, that that was on the table, and it was actively moving forward. It was difficult. Everybody wasn't on the same page. The president got a committee together based on a couple of us from this campus. Bill was on it, a couple of local people from the Law Foundation, and a couple people from the UW Law School. That committee made progress over the summer. I kept tabs on what was going on. As the fall started dwindling down, it became evident, because of these environmental factors, that it wasn't going to be a good idea to extend the UW Law School here as a formal program, you know, as an extension for there, for lots of reasons. The market is low, things like that. So it was decided, and I say it was decided, I'll get to it in a minute, it was decided if we had been party to this all along, thought it was a good idea, now that Seattle is not coming, can we afford to say, "Oh, we're sorry, we don't think it's a good idea," in good faith? My view on that is probably not. I don't feel like I could be a part of something like that, be 100% behind it, it's a good idea for us, and then because we're not going to do it through Seattle, all of a sudden say, "Oh, no, it's not a good idea." So I believe the best thing for us to do, and President Calce agrees, and my team agrees, that is to look at it, because it's a whole different situation. Look at it very closely as a campus with those factors I talked about, and if and only if. This is where you have to bring your engineering things, they have to be in parallel. All those things can't, one of them can't be true and you do it. All five of them have to be true and you do it. And that has to do with the support. It won't get in the way of the other initiatives that we want to do as a campus. The ABA recommends us doing it. It's a niche that serves our urban-serving mission well. There are just several things that I think it has to achieve before the answer is yes, let's go for it. Then it takes about five years before you can actually get accreditation and have a class that is accredited students, or students that have been through an accredited program. There's a probationary period. Does that answer what you're... Who is me, the president, and my team? Okay? And to make it official, the president sent a note reflecting that to the legislators involved on Monday.
So my question has to do with growth for the current year.
Growth, okay.
You had mentioned the target of 4% and the actual for fall at 2.2%. Do we have the chance to make that up through our winter and spring enrollments to get closer to that 4% target, or are we likely to lose as many as we gain?
Well, my understanding is we can, but maybe we should look to the back of the room. I saw Cedric, Carl. Do we have a chance to make up that 2.2%, get closer to 4% in the winter and spring quarters?
Winter quarters?
And I've only worked at three other institutions, and I had never heard of an institution who actually went up in the spring over what they are in the autumn. My last institution, we had a 5%, what we called melt. So we always planned for 95% in the spring that we had in the previous quarter. Here, we actually go up a little bit. I just don't know if we can make the whole 1.8 up, but it sounds like the news is positive. So do what you can to affect that. I'm not asking you to pay people's tuition, but do what you can to, or to soften your grading, either. Nobody has a question?
Many, many.
Oh, here we go. Here's one of our award-winning staff members. His book just got the Book of the Year, yes.
Could you just expand a little bit on what it means for the programs to become schools and sort of what that would mean for people who are outside of those schools or programs and serving them, like the library, for instance?
Well, right now, we have SAIS as a school and Milgard as a school. The other five units are programs. To have a dean in charge or at the leadership, the helm of one of those, you have to have a school. So right now, during these searches, Milgard and SAIS are looking for a dean. Education currently is looking for a director. And in academia, dean is, tends to be a more prestigious title and has more broad responsibilities and more outward-looking responsibilities. So one of my reasons is we're an urban-serving campus with an extremely strong outward-looking focus with our community. So I would prefer to have on the academic team people whose job it is is to be both inside and outside. And traditionally, a director is more like a department chair, where you're focused on the internal type things of the university. So for those programs that aren't schools, we're limited to only be able to search for a director, and that will attract a little bit different kind of academic leader. And also, we're getting ready to go into an open phase of a campaign next year. So to me, it would be advantageous for programs to have deans in charge, because they're more outwardly focused, and there'd be a lot of community involvement, engagement, those kinds of things. So that's basically why. Bothell has all deans now, too. They did it all at once. So I think that's what the UW was used to, as an institution coming forward all at once. We've chosen the piecemeal approach, and I guess for the first two, it must have been clear, but when we went up with our third one, they stopped, paused, thought, "What's your plan?" And I can't disagree with them. Yes?
This is sort of a follow-up on Justin's question. I've heard it said that the Seattle-based UW Board of Deans would not, would not welcome, or I don't know what the right word is, but was not necessarily open to the idea of the deans from the Bothell and the Tacoma campus joining their board as if they are peer deans to those deans in Seattle. And I was wondering what your thoughts are on how that impacts UW as a tri-campus university or as a system of three campuses, or what?
Well, you know, that's an interesting question that I hadn't thought of before, because actually, I'm on that board, and it's called the Board of Deans and Chancellors. So myself and Wolf are on that board. I had never heard that they wouldn't allow deans on there, but I guess that makes sense, because we have two deans, and they're obviously not members of that board. So it's a, it's a pretty clunky organization already. I don't know how many deans are up there. There's like 16, and then there's myself and Wolf. Does anybody know how many deans are in Seattle? Is it 16? Let's count. No, let's not count. It's somewhere between 12 and 18, yeah. So I'll have to look into that, John. I really don't know. Believe me, it's not always pleasant to spend four hours on the highway driving up there. They actually meet every two weeks now. When I first got here, we met once a month. Now, we meet every two weeks, and I'm also on the president's cabinet, and that meets once a month. So that means I have three trips for sure each month to Seattle, but usually more. I've already been there three times this week, or will have been there tomorrow, three times. I don't think I answered your question, John, but I don't see it as a disadvantage, as long as we have active involvement on there. I have mentioned to the provost at Seattle that it would be interesting to me to have our vice chancellor for academic affairs somehow plugged into those discussions, because our vice chancellor for academic affairs, along with the deans and the directors, end up acting on a lot of things that kind of come from that board. Well, I'm not going to make you sit here, or I'm not going to make you ask a question, but I do want you to know that I have really appreciated all your work this fall. It was my first fall coming here. I couldn't be more happy to be serving as your chancellor. I've made a lot of friends since I've been here, a lot of collegial interactions with everybody. Everybody has been fantastic. So you deserve a rest, so enjoy your families, your friends, your holidays, and come back ready to go, because I don't sit still very well. So I'll be ready to go January, so I hope all you are, too. So happy holidays, be safe if you travel. Thank you.